So, welcome, welcome this morning to our Rotary Club. What I thought was gonna be my third messed up meeting in a row. No bad thoughts. Half of the flags were in here, and especially the American flag. All right. Dog is six. Today, we have Wayne Britton.
No.
I'm really my... I need a volunteer. And our pledge is gonna be done by Jim Gilliam, is he here?
No.
I was right, he says the third messed up meeting.
Hi Mark!
Hi Mark!
Just in time for your expectations, Mark. She's getting on time, buddy.
Morning, everyone. You can kinda know the girl there, the flag's over there. And my pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. To the liberty of our people, to the justice of our nation, to our people, to the individual, to the liberty and justice for all.
Right in, Mark Britton, you're here.
He's here!
So, I personally try to take that third way test very, very seriously, and sometimes fail. And I'm really working on trying to do a better job, and then taking the inventory of people around me, and watching how they do. So, I get worried about friendly fire, you know, how we talk to each other and treat each other. And one of the things that helps me think about it is something that Maya Angelou said, which was, "People will forget what you said, and people will forget what you did, but they won't forget how you make them feel."
So, Joe.
So, Ken!
It's like we haven't talked about this before, but how about Yankee Doodle?
Thank you, Manny. Thank you, Yankee Doodle. Hello, Yankee.
Yankee Doodle.
Oh, yeah?
There's a difference for all that.
Is it?
Yeah.
Jimmy Tackney one? Bruce, you agree with Jimmy Tackney through the press? All right, all ready, ready? I'm a Yankee Doodle, Danny. Yankee Doodle, Doodle or Guy. A real live Yankee, what my Uncle Sam, born on the Fourth of July. I got a Yankee Doodle sweetheart, she's my Yankee Doodle gal. Yankee Doodle in the town, just as by the pony. I am the Yankee Doodle, oh yeah, the Yankee Doodle. I am the Yankee Doodle boy.
And I guess I got... Thank you, guys, today. Billy Watson, Alan DeCose, and Malene Campbell, and then a couple of next to us going in. The award prize today is supplied by Linda Senke. Uh-oh, I see, oh my god. You got a joke? And Bruce, are you gonna give us a joke today? A word.
Campbell joke.
So, Michael Cook, if you would introduce our visiting Rotarians.
My knowledge, there are no visiting Rotarians this morning. Welcome right on to the guest at the table.
If you have a guest at your table, please raise your hand.
Our guest here today, I'm sorry, Patrick McCouran, San Francisco Department. Better, more full introduction for the moment, thank you.
We bring Tom Carter, who is a branch manager of a local lending firm, which is First Priority Financial. Tom is married to a Rotarian in the Russian River Club.
Welcome all of our visiting visitors. Birthdays and anniversaries. Birthday today, Linda Barbara Barney, who we kind of recognized last week. Today's her birthday. And Linda Senke, she's my favorite, tomorrow.
Hey Linda.
Anything special?
My friend Margaret is coming down from Redding. She has a telescope that she doesn't use, but she doesn't know what kind it is, she just knows it's big. She's giving it to me. So, I think we'll see what it is, we'll answer the questions, and various friends and family and food and wine, and it's kind of like birthday month, so.
We don't have any wedding anniversaries today, but we do have a club anniversary, some guy named Kim Grant. Nine years in the club. These are upcoming events. If you're not in the committee yet, you really need to get into one, so look at me, I've signed what you want. Charlie is having his meeting this Thursday, and he'll be kicking off the grant requests, so that's an important event here. Next Monday is our Board of Directors meeting, and it'll be the first one of the year, so it's always a lot of fun seeing that stuff. Do you wanna come? You're all welcome. It's at the soon center, and that's at 5:30. And... I need another little slide here that I forgot, we have some announcements. And I'd like to call on Gail to talk to us about what's going on at Cajun.
Thank you, President Campbell. Is it on? Yeah. Okay, Scott did a cry. How about everybody?
Aye!
We have several things going on, because Cajun's now a month away, so it's such a fun event, and everybody's all hands on deck when we get to that point. One of the interesting things that we always have to do is get trained to serve alcohol. And we have several different dates coming up, so I would like, do you have the date, Scott, handy?
What?
That's actually her date.
This is like being a schoolteacher, you can actually get it.
There are three you can choose from, I don't know, that's too much for me.
I'm gonna be sending around, and I'm gonna be asking the email that's sent around to everybody, with the dates, and tell me when would be your favorite date, and your second choice. We need to put together our class of beer and wine and hurricane servers. If you took the class before, you don't have to go again, but if you have attended, we really do need to have... My goal is that everybody in the club ultimately takes the class, and we won't have this problem. Then the next thing is, we have a great idea about getting sponsors for doing things, and we've gotten... I mean, John. John has sponsored our wine glasses this year, thank you, John. And I'm gonna have another, I'm gonna ask Matt to tell you more about sponsors. But we were thinking, maybe it'd be a cute idea if the club were willing, everybody to pitch in five or ten dollars, and we would do our club sponsor of the beer glasses. And they will have imprint on them, and we will be selling them with the beer. So, I'm just gonna, next week, just put a little bastia up by Jerry, and ask everybody who wants to contribute to the beer glass sponsorship. It'll take us five hundred dollars, so that means five to ten dollars ahead, and we're there. So, Matt, you wanna talk sponsors?
So, we're coming down the long stretch here, and I need help both by way of sponsorships and approaching people who might be sponsors, it'd be appreciated at this time. I'm going to be sending out a day in email blast, the forms, the sponsorship form, to explain the laws, and explain the benefits. And so, take a look at those, and both with respect to what you or your business may be able to offer, and to people who are businesses that you may be able to approach, it would be much appreciated. I can answer any questions you may have, I'm the point person, and we've got a month left, so I would really ask for your assistance in getting it done, have fun, and shit.
Thanks, man. The whole secret to Cajun is getting sponsorships, because if we get no sponsorships, then Cajun definitely grosses as much as guys in cook. So, this is how we get to the bottom line, is to get the expenses coming through sponsorships. Merchandise, another way in which we can make some money.
Well, we're going to have shirts, which Scott's designed once again. Jen has graciously sponsored a cup cooler, which, Pussies, you guys know what they're called, you know, for beer and... You know, I can sponsor that, so we're gonna have that. We're gonna have glasses, and anybody that would like to help me at the merchandise table, I would really appreciate it, just let me know. Thank you.
Thanks, Kate. Then, the other thing I wanna mention is that I think we have some posters, some cards. Please pick them up, spread them around, and we're gonna, we've learned that every person who comes through that gate spends usually the same... We get fifty dollars ahead, basically, whether they spend on tickets or food, moves. So, we want as many people to come in as possible, and the more people you can bring, and encourage to come and listen to the music and enjoy the show, the better we are. Thank you.
So, Michael Fellows and I are the volunteer coordinators of this thing, and we know where you all live, as opposed to having to join. Really, one of the keys leading the same come up are us working, and it's a tough day for some people, it's a tough couple of days, but we have shifts starting Friday afternoon setting up, Saturday morning setting up, and then throughout the day Saturday, maybe a number of areas. So, there are chiefs over here on the table, if you could pick an area, or a couple of areas to sign up for the shifts, it would be wonderful. We do bring in some outside help, some outside volunteer groups that come in to do, we're gonna build, they're gonna help us build the trucks at the end of the day. But really, the key is us being there and being part of making this magic happen. Gail mentioned the RBS, Responsible Business Service. Even if you went through last year, you must be in possession of your card at the event, in the light of it, we get de-coating, which we did last year. And cops, excuse me, law enforcement, will want to see the cards of the people serving beer and serving hurricanes, and so, just so we can't spur around them, because it'll shut us down. So, please, please, take the training, let Gail and or Scott know the dates work through, and if you have, if you ever read card is, find it, please.
Do we have a dates possible base for this training that I might be able to...
It's fine.
I'll put them on the website, so as soon as I find out where they are.
Of course, but with the same expectation, this event is half of our fundraising, and if we don't, we don't have money to support all of the other wonderful activities that we do in the community. So, the two keys to ending up money there is the number of people that come, and reducing our expenses through sponsors. So, help us find sponsors, and help us promote this thing. I went to a lunch yesterday at Olin Wong, one of my favorite restaurants, he didn't have a poster, but he does now.
We'll add a sponsor.
And we'll find out. And I need, I need a little bit of help. I had in my pickup, six more signs, billboard signs to put up, and I run out of time, I'm leaving town tomorrow. So, I need to find someone that would take over that job, and I've got the map, and where four of those go, and we're just looking out, takes less than an hour to do it. Need a pickup car, carrying stuff, so if someone would help me with that, I'd appreciate it. See you later.
Jen, I have a late breaking announcement. We have our beer glass sponsors, so cancel four, and then they are gonna be sponsoring our beer glass.
I can't risk all of you there.
Message about...
And another late breaking announcement. Thanks to our ever diligent Pam, I can now give you the dates if they're possible, for the training, and if people wanna just give me a show of hands, maybe we can deal with this right here and now. There's, here are the options, and then I'll read them back again. August nineteenth, August twenty-first, August twenty-fifth, or August twenty-eighth, now. How many people might wanna go on the nineteenth?
Yeah, I know. What, what days of the week in mind?
If somebody, if somebody could quickly find out what day of the week August nineteenth is. Okay, well, then, I'm just, now that you're here, I'll email it.
What time of the day?
Six.
Six o'clock, it's six to eight o'clock in the evening, and this, everyone says it's a really interesting program, ultimately painless. Okay, thank you.
And I can attest, it is very underscore, because I've looked at different ways that people, like, you know, driver's licenses, or things to look for, the time of driver's license, and everything, and I've tested very quickly, of someone who needs it.
And they can be pretty, related to that, the first line of defense is at the gates where the over twenty-one armed band is going. So, we really need volunteers at the gates to go through that training, it's not just serving beer out. So, we'd like to have at least one training person at each gate for each shift, so if you have a chance to go to that training, it's on the gates.
Any other announcements this morning? Well, we're gonna complete the thing that we started in our first meeting, which is Paul Harris. So, Bruce, if you could come up, definitely.
Tony, would you open the iris? As any of you who were here at Jen's first meeting, where this district under ten percent or... We presented a large number, I think the number was sixteen, Paul Harris fellows, which competed this club to being a one hundred percent Paul Harris fellow, only the third in our district. There were a couple, there were a couple... There were a couple people who either weren't there, or wanted to kind of stick out early and surprise me, so I would like to complete that, and before I do, I'd also like to publicly acknowledge that this was done with the help of Diana and Kurt Erst. And we used recognition points for them to help through this, and we're worried, so we're kind of agreed that they will be paid forward in the future. So, David Guff, would you come up, please?
Thank you for your by name, and it's Paul Harris.
There are two more to join this club, but I'll stick here, one from here, I will mention by name, Jim Gilliam and Martha Lamm. So, as they introduce the company, I suppose people wanna make sure that they get their recognition. But on behalf of the trustees of the foundation, I'd like to thank all of you, everyone, for your continued support of the Rotary Foundation, because it is the oil and gas that makes our organization grow both locally and internationally, so let's welcome to it our newest volunteer.
In case you missed, in case you missed the after contest entries earlier today, we had these four people who submitted entries. Love this Rotary Hall. Do you have any happy bucks? I want you to know that it's gonna be a Paul Harris today. This one, Linda Senke, which was selected as the winner. So, Linda.
Come on down!
Joe, you're selling a car over here on the phone.
Before we start with the Rotary Club, I'd like to ask if there's any happy bucks out there? You know, we're having something really exciting happening, and we'd like to put somebody in the foundation.
My happy buck is that she came home from the hospital.
And we have a sunshine person, Julie. Tell us about what's going on in his hand.
I don't know, you guys are supposed to be giving me some stuff. Oh yeah, how's Marty's party? I wasn't there. Bob's home, how's he doing?
Bob's home, he's doing great, I thank everybody for all their support. I particularly thank the Cajun crowd for picking up Cajun for me when I was absent, otherwise occupied. Considering that we had been told he might not survive the surgery, I want you to know that he not only survived, but he was negotiating with a surgeon yesterday about when he could go back to the gym. So, they, the surgeon said four weeks, Bob said two weeks, and he said along three weeks. So, he's doing great, thank you, everyone, for all of your support.
I wanted to do a few gambling's in the crowd, this high school senior center. Just having a bus trip to Cash Creek Casino on August twentieth. So, they're meeting at the Lutheran Church at nine o'clock, so anybody that's interested in going for thirty-eight dollars, that's the buy-in, and on the bus.
Driving the bus.
I don't know, it sounds kinda like bus. Should we all have some happy sunshine?
Well, next week, I don't know how this works, but next week, I'm celebrating my twenty-fifth wedding anniversary.
That's gonna be easy, dear wife. Congratulations!
Well, do you know, I'd like to start off the club's supportive of one of the sponsorship, what are we gonna do now? The beer glasses are gone, right?
Oh, we can always take them opportunities. I would love to see us do some sponsorships, which we did a couple of years ago, where different members got together as co-sponsors, and we had banners with people's names, or names of their businesses. And if you would like to do that, as the minimum level is two hundred dollar sponsorship, and a couple of years ago, we would have two or three people get together, and say, "We're gonna sponsor, be a sponsor," and we got a sponsor banner for them. So, that would be a wonderful thing to do. And then, we also, if you're thinking of bigger bucks, we would be happy to have you sponsor one of the bands, and if you are a band sponsor, then you will be announced from the stage, and you'll get a lot of hoopla. That one goes for fifteen hundred, and step right up. And then, we also have an interest of people who might wish to sponsor other elements of the entire, like the stage, or the shade, and if you would be willing to do that, each of those are multiples of a thousand, so any thousand dollar sponsor, your name would be put out as one of those sponsors. And this is the way that we can actually make Cajun make real money for us. So, if you know anybody who might be interested in any of those opportunities, and that reminds me that the French Guard this year is again, being a band sponsor, we will have a Friday night Cajun opening event at, you know, it's a self-bar. Open bar is on you, not on them. But at any rate, last year, we had a huge number of people with a band down on the terrace, and we will be doing that again this year, thanks to French Guard.
Very good. We have an interesting program today, and so I'd like to ask Pam to come up and introduce us to you.
Good morning, everybody. I'm really happy to be here today to introduce Chris McCouran, he is working at San Francisco Police Department, and is assigned to Central Assault Unit, and focusing on human trafficking and child exploitation. And I have actually invited his predecessor to my prior club, and it was really compelling explanation, so I wanted to bring that to you here today. Detective McCouran is Lieutenant of Cover Operations and Lieutenant of Rescue of Adult and Mannered Criminals and Crime Crimes, and he does training and education about human trafficking officers, advocates, community members throughout San Francisco Bay Area, and I'm sure they'll give us a lot more information about that, so I'll go ahead and talk about that.
With all this off which has been on your Cajun, I'd like to offer a field variety test, to anyone who drinks too much. Test now. We don't mind being cops as long as... We don't mind being cops, as long as the F-word's not used right before, it's usually okay. It doesn't depend on that, it's a good call. You guys are very lively this morning, so I appreciate that. Kind of wakes me up. Only I'm at a desk right now, I did. So, my name is Chris McClellan, I'm in charge of the San Francisco Police Department. I've been at just about eight years this year. I've been assigned to the Domestic Violence and Sexual Assault Unit for just about two and a half years. In my department, we get to decide that we want to go into. It's not such a general test to go into the police department, and then go to the federal services, like protective, you know, odd in the kind of 50 where you might, but, you can have an interest to go to those areas. So, something in my head says sex crimes is the appropriate place to go. Our department's a little different, it's a basketball, I don't know if you guys know about the basketball police department, but they don't actually have detectives, it's all generalists. So, if you get a phone patrol, whether it's sex crimes, property, or politics, you can go to the front and end. Our department, patrol person gets a call for service.